With more than 50 people, we will ask them to take a two-week break, train within your team, and then play someone different. So that's something where even though the league, even though the government regulations is clearly written just around the league, we can still apply that and still mitigate risks, keep our athletes safe, and be very reasonable about keeping the groups small and limiting the exposures. So what's our next one that we got going on here? So this is just talking about the programming. So it's just to know that our games can play based on the government regulations. And we're asking coaches to always consider ways to not breach physical distancing when they're warming up, space out the athletes, take frequent breaks, clean sanitizer hands, clean the volleyballs, limit session durations. So all these things are just ways to help mitigate the risk and limit exposures. And that's all it's about right now. Per the government regulations volleyball can play. And then we just have to manage the risk levels and try to mitigate the best we can. Okay, I think that covers my return to play. I think we just get into a little more detail just as far as they must eliminate all physical contact. So the athletes cannot be high-fiving, handshakes. If it's not necessary to switch sides, there's no reason to don't. Anyone off of the court must maintain two-meter distance. So the, you know, we have to make sure that, just cost a reminder, obviously with the athletes. I mean, one thing that we're finding, obviously, as we know, our athletes love to celebrate and it's a great habit that they have. But that's actually the time where they, it will come together and they need to be reminded to not high-five and hopefully not, you know, get too close. So that's not easy for our athletes in our sport. But unfortunately, that's the point we're at so we can keep playing our sport. And besides that, the next phase is just for Alicia and our team is we'll be looking at some more protocol just around when there's exhibition matches and hopefully a bit of gameplay, like tournament, like not tournament, sorry, matches. That's where we're at. So Kelvin, is there any questions you want answered now before we go into the other piece on return to play specifically?
Alicia, do you have any?
Or anything that I missed?
No, I've been answering as well on the side. There was just questions regarding the protocols of wearing masks, mandatory for referees on the stand if they're using hand whistles and why they have to wear them on the stand if they're physical distance from the athletes on the court.
That'll be the facility, right? So with facilities, we're required to have masks on. So that's a, that's a tough one. Masks are required. And we're even encouraging athletes to wear the masks. You'll hear that a lot. We'll be encouraging athletes to wear the masks as often as they can, especially warm-ups, cooldowns, even during play. That's what our encouragement is.
Well, I'm going to jump in here quickly. I've got VC guidelines and modifications on the following slide. I think this is probably a good opportunity for me to sort of interject and to discuss some of them. And I will tell you, I had the opportunity along with Samara and Jason this past weekend to test it out. So we were at a couple sites on Saturday and Sunday. We had some filming that was taken place by Dylan and LP. And we wanted to capture what it will look like moving forward and what, so some of the do's and the don'ts. And so I just want to highlight some of them right now. And so again, keeping in line with the 50 people, so there's going to be no more than essentially two teams in the gym. Athletes will be walking in physically distancing along with the referees. At the time they enter the school, that is when their mask is to be put on. In addition, referees are to come dressed. So we're, there's going to be no going into a locker room or anything to change. So you're going to come in, you're going to come dressed. You will bring a bag, a plastic bag, see-through bag that will hold all of your, you know, your whistles, all your tools that is required for the match. And then you will head to the stand. Especially when there are some situations where, you know, at the 16, 17, and 18, where you have double referees. So we are going to be moving with double referees for those premier matches. And so, you know, we're going to be distancing along the way. Substitutions. So I'm going to start with substitutions. You're going to have the player on the court that is going to be substituted off. She, he or she will come to the net while the substituted player will be at the attack line. So no different than it is now. But that, that change will take place at a distance. So not going to be together, one's going to be at the net, one will be at the attack line. For a second substitution, you just have that player wait off, you know, keeping a couple meters so they don't need to be together. So we're not going to be police people and, you know, have them all come together. We're going to take some time and allow that transition to take place. From a timeout standpoint, timeouts will be done on the court. So it will not be near the bench. It will be on the court. The entire team can participate. They will be distanced in sort of a circle. Coach will be in the middle. They can bring their water bottle onto the court. So what does that mean? That means that they are instructed to have at least one towel because we know there's going to be spillage taking place. They're the ones that are going to be responsible for cleaning that up. When a, when the captain wants to come to the stand, they will sort of put up their hand, asked to approach the stand if they need some explanation. They will stay onto the court, so they're not going to be coming up to the stand. And then the referee will give whatever instructions that are required. The teams will not change sides. So whoever comes to the court on side A, that will be their side for all three sets, should that take place. There, because we will not have any parents, they will score and line themselves. No flags, they will score and not line themselves. Again, this is all what's happening right now. It could change, we don't know, but as of now, right? So bear in mind, right? Things are fluid. This is what's taking place today. I think for the most part, the celebrations, we will be in charge of that. So if they are high-fiving, referees will tweet-tweet as much as they can with their electronic whistle and we'll get into that to put in, you know, to stop that. So we're not, you know, punishing them. But again, it's just letting them know what's happening. It worked out really well this weekend. They are understanding, they are, you know, it's being reinforced by the coaches. The benches, they are separated. So, or the chairs, so they're being distanced. The warm-up will be extended. We could wrap around behind the end line potentially, right? We're not worried because there's not going to be any parents or anything there to impede. There will be a coin toss. We are going to allow for the coin toss. But again, all they're going to be able to choose is serve or receive. It's not going to be side. So serve or receive. They will distance themselves. There will not be any shaking hands. At the end of the match, the referee would go to position A. If there is a second referee in that match, the second referee go to position B. So sort of like the same international style. The line judge, well, they're part of the team, so we won't need to worry. But let's say if this was potentially college/university, the line judge on that team would go, on that side would go behind the referee two and referee one, et cetera. So those are some of the, the changes that will be taking place. Back to you.
Was there any other return to play questions or anything else Alicia wanted covered off? I mean, as we're all saying, I mean, things will change quickly. And I think, you know, really, obviously, the critical pieces with staying adaptable and fluid to the situation, there'll have to be specific instructions related to each facility. So just to be aware of that as well. And as Andrew said, there was some videos getting taken for event protocol and match protocols, so all that will be shared soon too.
Yep. Another question we had, Joanne, was we've been directed officials should be included in the maximum 50 participants. Will that be the case for us in the OVA?
Likely that will at this time because facilities are limited to that total. Because now it's 50 in total. But that could change again too. So again, we will not assign more people to a facility than would be allowed. And the facility will let you in. They won't let everybody in, so.
Perfect. And there's also a question if all the clubs and teams will be getting all of this information as well. And yes, and also with regards to the VC rules of the game protocols, they're currently on the website as well. As Joanne mentioned previously, with return to play protocols for the OVA, we're updating the rules, modifying it a little bit to add some more OVA-specific Ontario-focused things and then also the match protocols and event hosting. So that goes out to all membership. And also at any time, go to the OVA website under return to play protocols. Literally on the homepage, it's the big black header. Click on that and everything is there and you can read everything. Okay, so there's more competition questions as well about who gets deciding, who gets bench A and bench B. Great question. We'll have to discuss that and get back to you.
Alicia, I'll just say that we talked about it. And for me, whoever gets there, we don't need to worry about it. Because let's say a team is there 15 minutes before. We're not going to determine who is A and B. Whoever gets in the gym, I would say they are, they have first choice as to where they go to make it.
Exactly. Okay, perfect. And then what does the purple card policy apply to? If there's no spectators? Once again, it depends on the facility, size, and regulations. And looking at the type of models we'll be looking at forward. Carrie will get into this with you competitions. But as we know, there's 50 people in a facility. That's not conducive to a traditional OVA tournament style where we have nine teams on three courts. So some of the facilities we're looking at and immense types we're looking at modifying too. There may be some spectators. So the purple card policy will still be in effect if anyone is there. Right. And then also signing of the game sheet before and after the game by coaches and/or captains. Is this still in place?
Sorry, yeah, forgot to, yeah, no. So there'll be no, no signatures. And so, you know, with, we're looking at a couple different things. For the roster, essentially, they will just bring that roster and place it on the table and have the, the scorer put that roster in. When it comes to, you know, giving the lineup, the lineup will not be handed to the referee. They will just place the lineup on the table. And again, there's the score. So we're really trying to, you know, eliminate any type of contact. You know, if the ball comes to the referee and you pick up the ball, what we were doing is, you know, we have hand sanitizer. So it's frequently using the hand sanitizer as well. So we're trying to cover off all of those points of contact. So no signatures for captains, for coaches. If the captain elects to protest, they can write it on the, on a piece of paper and hand that over to the scorer and we can, you know, look after that protest at that point.
Okay, we have another question from Cecil. What is warm-up protocol? Will there be more time allowed to change hitting teams? Carrie will be getting into warm-up protocol a little bit. So you know what, maybe we'll hold on to that one once you get to that slide. What else? Is it possible to get a digital platform? In terms, sorry, Paul, do you want to expand on that question? I'm not sure what you're referring to there in terms of team lists or something?
Oh, sorry, I hit the enter button and it switched down, so it carries on below. But one of the platforms I've used in the past for like league organizing is IM League. It's used in the universities for intramural sports. But it's really good in that it captures all of the team's names and information on a digital platform. And then you can do an electronic score sheet. So there's no touching of anything. But then the coaches and the captains can verify their team schedules in advance. And it just gives you an opportunity to have zero touch. And the technology is already out there. It's used in intramural sports across most universities in Canada and the United States. And it could be something very quickly implemented so that OVA could therefore have all the teams listed on a digital platform. And then when you go in to pull out your team list, it's already there. So the scorer can just do it on computer or an iPad.
Yeah, exactly. No, that's perfect. And that's something for us to look into. We've been trying to get digitized and automated. The issue is when we have so many hosts and trying to make sure that they have the technology in place and proper internet connections and a lot of fun stuff to make sure it's working in these high school gyms. But yeah, it's something that's on our radar that we really want to do moving forward. So yeah, good point. Okay, another question here. Are we frowning upon blocking at the net, Joanne, when you have two athletes for each team getting extremely close?
The athletes, they're allowed to block. And we didn't put any limitations on that. But it's just a matter of avoiding physical contact the best they can. So if they can deliberately, they're not allowed to contact anybody. That's what we're looking for and nothing for law.
Okay. Carrie, Joe, will accommodation be made for gyms where there's an obvious obstruction in gyms such as a basketball net that gives an advantage or disadvantage?
It's something that Volleyball Canada adds in theirs is that don't switch sides unless there's a specific advantage for someone. But I think that's something that it can be very discretionary based on the venue. And if we know that there's a real disadvantage on one side. But for the most part, we're discouraging having to change.
Okay. John Gillis is asking about the balls and if the manufacturer, SoMakasa, they have a brand of sanitizer that causes minimum damage to the volleyballs. So currently, their recommendation is soap and water, which obviously we cannot do during tournament play. And so we right now have just been using Lysol spray like all of our beach friendlies and when we're doing training sessions and video sessions on the weekends. And so far, so good. And we're also keeping them abreast of the situation on all the cleaners we're using so they can track it on their end as well. All right, I think we're good on questions. I will have to go through the massive list of questions while you're presenting, Carrie, to make sure I haven't missed anything. So I will mute myself now.
Okay. Indoor competition season, as of, I'm sure everybody knows it's been postponed. It's been postponed for a while now till January. So fingers crossed, we will be able to have that January start time. And we are still planning on having a regular season for January. So that means you're, we've reduced it to three events per age division. And right now, we're still hoping to run some type of tournament style. Again, that may change. We're hoping to be fluid. And, you know, as COVID changes, we will adapt to fit their new regulations. But in the meantime, we are looking at running some indoor friendlies similar to what was happening on the beach, but a bit different, a bit stricter because we have a lot of regulations regarding being indoor and facility rules and things along that line. So we were hoping to run them in November. In the first two weeks of December, on Saturday and Sunday, we would be doing a wave-type format similar to the beach friendlies where we would see three teams in the morning, a break period for cleaning, and three teams in the afternoon. So built into the schedule, we do have cleaning time, entry and exit for each team. And we are hoping to run these on two-court facilities minimum just to allow for space and for off-teams to, you know, have a little bit of training time as well. Like they'll be able to use that court for what they have. These are all just what we'd like to see happen for this. So that would eliminate any need for a warm-up because this other team would have access to an extra court where they would be able to just come in and come off and, and do that. So stay tuned for that. It's coming up rapidly and, you know, lots of good things happening. But hopefully, within the next few weeks, we'll have some announcements. And there would be a posted calendar with certain age divisions. It will be, our offerings are going to be a lot lower than what we would like. But that's just because of our, the facility issues that are popping up everywhere. So, and that rolls into OCs, I see is the next point here. Again, we're running April 2021 and two locations, hopefully Rim Park and Paramount Fine Foods. We are looking, right now, we have scheduled seven events in four weeks and split over the two venues. That might change. But again, stay tuned for that. And we do have some events that would be running the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and the Sunday, Monday, Tuesday again. And these are pretty much unavoidable if we want to keep running our festival style. But yeah, so we're, we're looking forward to hopefully running those and getting us back. Or, you know, again, we'll let everybody know if there's any changes that will come up with that. So the decision for a cancellation or some type of large modification to Ontario Championships will come in February. We're kind of rolling with like a six-week deadline. And that goes for the January start time as well. If for some reason we're running into issues with regards to starting a regular season, we hope to make that decision by mid-December. I think December 13th is our deadline to make a decision whether or not to move forward with a regular season as we'd hoped or creating these, these larger modifications that are needed. So purple, purple card, purple card policy. Yeah, so we'll see. Right now, we, if anything that we would be running exhibition would not permit spectators. So the purple card would not be in use. So, but moving forward to our regular season competition, if we are able to run the traditional tournament style, it will be effective. Like we will be implementing it for all age divisions across the board. So that's our purple card policy. We touched on the new ball. We'll be introducing three new balls this year. 11 to 12 U will remain with the NBA light. We are moving to a beautifully designed ball in-house by our carish Maharaj. She did an excellent job designing it and we're excited to use it. And that will be for 13 to 15 U. And then for 16 U to 18 U will be the V200W. They're not mandatory for clubs to buy, but we will be providing our hosts with these balls as needed and they will be used for all our competitions. I believe Volleyball Canada is also using these balls too. So, but they're not as pretty as ours, so.
You're correct, Carrie. It's the exact same ball, but it's red and white with their logo on it.
Yeah, not as pretty. So a bit on the warm-up. Again, all this thing, stuff that I'm updating you on is if we're running the nine-on-three traditional season starting January. So more clarifications. And this is as to where the coaches can be tossing balls. And with some discussion with some officials, we felt it was okay for the coaches to toss the balls over the net during their warm-up on court, but they have to do it within the three-meter line. And so that makes sure they're out of the path of the ball. And then the athletes would create a little bit of a shag system on the sidelines and baselines and then pass the ball to the coach within the, within the three-meter line, hopefully never passing within the actual playing surface. So the VC guidelines and modifications, we are working on updating the VC modified rules of the games to fall in line with our protocols as well as updating our match protocols. And then once this will be posted, it will create, it'll be posted and mailed out. And obviously, it'll be front and center on our COVID communication page. And obviously, it'll be available to every facility host and things like that. So they know what to look for. So yeah, we were just reviewing the recommendations that LP had come up with over the weekends. And Andrew nailed every single one of them. So yeah, so that's what it's going to look like. And yeah, just to touch up on the friendlies, hopefully, we won't need a warm-up. So, because that free court's available. So if we're able to run those. And, and that's that. Um, it's, am I forgetting anything? Alicia, am I forgetting anything?
No, basically, like you said, stay tuned on the modifications to the season and the indoor friendly models that we're working on. It will be obviously a lot smaller than anything we're used to based on a half-day kind of schedule to limit the time of contact of people in that location. So stay tuned. You know, it's, as Joanne said, we all have to be extremely fluid and adaptable this year especially. And we are making changes as they come down through legislation from the government as well as with public health units and facilities and lack thereof facilities that we're dealing with. So we will get you more information as soon as it's ready to go.
Wonderful. Thanks, Carrie. Thanks, Alicia.
You're welcome.
Joanne, just want to hit on the first three points and I'll take it from there. If you don't mind, please.
Sure, for which one? This next slide?
Yes.
That's Alicia.
Okay, fine, I'll hop in. Surprise, we have a new registration system. Okay, so everyone should have gotten the communication there from the OVA office. And so basically, the membership registration system replaces the old national registration system that Volleyball Canada developed about 12 years ago. The main reason for the switch was that old platform was no longer supported because it was such an old infrastructure. And as we know, technology changes at a split second. So it's very, very similar to what we've been using. So when you guys go in, if we have a season to register as a referee, it's very intuitive and it's the same steps you would have taken in the past. Basically, none of the data is carried over from the old system. We need to have clean information and data in the new system. So go in, create your new account. If you want to, right now, you can register as a free member. So second point there, when should I register? Right now, we're telling referees not to register until we have a competition season or if there's matches for you guys to start working at. So if we can get a calendar in place and events up and running for the indoor friendlies, we will work with referees to make sure some of them are getting registered to work these events for us. In terms of voting at regional AGMs, as per the OVA constitution, which we just cannot change and it needs a full vote at the AGM level of membership to change those constitutions. So basically, you have to be a member in your region to vote at the regional AGMs, which are actually coming up in November. We're just getting all the information together from the regional presidents and that should come out shortly. So what we're just saying is if you want to vote at your regional AGM, and please do, go out there, we want to have voice of all members, you're only going to have to register honestly as a recreational player. And it's $7 for the OVA membership. And Volleyball Canada takes $5 on that. If you update your membership and upgrade it later on to work matches, you would just pay the differential. So if you're a local, you know, you pay a hundred and some odd dollars minus the 12 that you had already paid. Any questions on MRS? Oh, sorry. Try to man both here. Nope. Okay, so that's the quick and dirty on the new membership registration system. And the URL is there. It's also on the front page of our website and was also emailed out to everyone. But if there's questions, just let us know. Okay, true.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. So as you know, that membership typically runs from September 1 to August 31. And at this time, we're not going to be, or you're not asked to register. And at this time, we're not going to be, or you're not asked to register until January, or again, as Alicia pointed out, if we have these friendlies, you will be required to, to register. So we were looking at, okay, because we're not going to have a, a rulebook, we're not giving out any rulebooks unless you absolutely want to purchase one. But you know, there are no updates, there are no changes. And so Volleyball Canada felt, you know what? You know, we're going to have a limited run on those rulebooks. So unless it's for new level ones, there will be a rulebook provided. However, if you absolutely want one, you can certainly go ahead. So we're looking at, okay, do we, you know, minus the, the $17 for your registration. We were thinking about it. However, what we have done is we've provided, or we will be providing an electronic whistle and a mask for every registered referee. You may know that, that the cost of these electronic whistles are quite high. They're going anywhere from 20 to, to $25 right now. And so we have purchased a bulk of whistles. They actually still haven't come in yet. So as of now, and I know there's going to be a lot of questions and there's probably going to be a lot of angst. As of now, we are saying that the registration fee will not be reduced. It's twofold. A, I have looked and, and wanted to see what the other provinces were doing as well. There's no other province right now for, for volleyball that has reduced registration. Volleyball Canada has gone up $1. And outside of level threes, fours and fives, VC is not charging that $35 for a level three, the $40 surcharge for a level four and the $50 for, for level five. So that is what VC has, has decided to do for the year. They still have, there's, we still have the other VC charges, but there, there's always a, a, an additional surcharge for those level three and, and higher referees. Stay tuned, but as it stands right now, we, we aren't having a, a decrease. You have to understand that we are still continuing with our programming. We are still developing. We find that this is extremely important. And you know, whether it's with the, the Rules R or the Referee Engagement Center, we have overhead, we have our, our dear friend Kelvin, all of those charges are, are part of that or make up that, that membership fee. So again, at this time, we will not be reducing the, the registration, but you will be happy to, to find out that you're going to be receiving a, a electronic whistle, which is mandatory and, and a beautiful mask from, from the OVA as well. So that's what I have on that part. Okay, so for the certification and upgrades, as you know, we're on hold or on standby. We, we don't know what's happening with colleges and universities. We should know any day now. I've been in contact with, you know, the OUA and the, the OC double A along with the, the OVA. And we should know within a couple of weeks whether or not a season's going to take place or what that season is going to look like. They are waiting for really nationals to determine what that will look like. So maybe there won't be nationals and there may just be matches, you know, within the province. Who knows? But as you can well imagine, there are a number of schools that are going online. What does that mean for the athlete? You know, can they still get together? So fingers crossed, but we, we don't know. As soon as we find out, you will be notified. And so with that, it just did not make sense. We, we weren't able to have any exhibition matches. We weren't able to have any, any tournaments. And so those are the events that we typically use for upgrading purposes. And so we've made that, the decision not to have any upgrades whatsoever. I am happy to report, or I, I wanted to let you know that from a level three standpoint, we did have seven people that completed and were successful. And they are Roberta Tamblyn, formerly known as Asaf. Congrats on your, your nuptials. She's from region three. We have Melanie Ducey M from, from region two. Mike Chow from region five. Arif Nantu from region four. Sean Penhale from region three. Michael Rock from region three and Cam Taylor from, from region five. So congrats to those seven. We had two still from, from, from year two. And with the eight that we have from year one, so that we have 10 that are still in the program. And so we'll do our, our very best to at least still facilitate that. And so stay tuned. Chris Getz, as I mentioned earlier, he's the new RUP lead and, and he will be in contact with you. From a level four standpoint, we, we had the fortune of getting three spots for nationals this year. We had our three candidates that were ready. And unfortunately, the, the rub was, was pulled. And so that's David Williams, Convu and, and Andy Wu. So those are our, our three. And then we have two from year one and that's Dimitri Majurius and Angelo Messina. That makes up our five. And every province is only allowed five at any one point. So that puts us in a bit of a, of a pickle because we wouldn't even be able to at this point even have, send someone to the clinic because we're at our five capacity. What does that look for, look, look like, you know, next year in Montreal for the 17, 18 U? We don't know. Can we get an exception for Ontario? Because we're the only province that is at capacity. Don't know. So we still have a lot of questions, a lot of answers to, to get. I was, I attended the ROC meeting in the end of June. We are actually having a second one coming up in, in, in November. And so I'll, I'll get more information there. On the beach side, you know, fortunately locked down, right? Except for a few friendlies. No beach took place this year. And you know, we, we did, or we do have three candidates and I want to highlight Michael Zhang, Calvin Yi and Vanessa Owen. So hopefully, you know, next year we'll start up again on, on the sand. So stay tuned. John Gillis will be able to provide more information on that front.
And just to jump in here to screw your presentation up, Andrew and John Gillis, speaking of outdoor, we are also working on snow volleyball. So we've always talked about it. And this is the biggest, you know, kick in the pants to get moving on trying to introduce a new discipline for our sport in Ontario. Cause hey, hopefully it's going to be an Olympic sport someday. So John will be chatting about outdoor snow volleyball refereeing and next step. So stay tuned for that as well.
And if I can, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that Andrew will be my first ref I'll invite to the snow volleyball.
Yeah, put me down. I'm there.
Look at your OVA perka.
Hence, hence why you have, hence why you see my background.
Yeah, check out the world championship one on YouTube. It's fun.
I'll join you, brother.
So that's, that really is a hot off the, the press. So thank you for that, Alicia. For level two, we did have some folks that, you know, from region five and region two that were able to complete their, their, the level two. But there's a number of regions that, you know, weren't able to. And being consistent, you know, we're, we're moving forward, it will all take place at this, at the same time. And so we're, you know, planning on getting those that have not been able to write their exam or get their matches in at the practical. We're, we're hoping to get that done. So stay tuned for that from your RC. Level one, the local referee clinic online. This is something that is again, talk about sort of hot off the presses. This is something that, you know, we've been working on. And I'm, I'm very pleased and excited to, to announce that this will be ready in January. So starting in January, anyone that goes to a clinic, it will be online. Let me tell you how this platform is unbelievable. So I want to take this opportunity and, and thank four individuals in particular who have been working their tails off to get this up and running and it looks slick. So special thanks to Brad Gerardo, Ryan McDoom, Kennedy Ramsden and Brittany Saunders for their tremendous work. And again, when you see it, you will be amazed. I also want to acknowledge the, the working team, the, the working group. And that consisted of Andy Cameron, who was really heading this from, from the get-go, from the start. Jason Dodd, John Gillis and Calvin Chang. So thank you to all of you. So some of the clinicians out there may be saying, oh, what does that mean to me? That's right. It does mean something and you know, you will be trained on it because there's going to be no more of this six to eight hours in class and the person just hearing you. That's just not with this new generation, with this new wave of, you know, the platform, they, they just, the way of, you know, getting material across, they don't want to hear from, from you as, as much. I mean, as much as you provide a lot of information, you're still going to be involved, but you're going to work with this, this platform. So stay tuned. You will get, get trained on that. Next, Kelvin, I think you're, you're up there.
Yeah. So the next slide we have, we got some less new info, more less new info. So the first thing we wanted to touch on was the pay periods. In the past, we've had three pay periods generally for indoor. Hearing the feedback from the officials and knowing that people want to be paid faster and more frequently. And with the addition of implementing direct deposit this past year, with the committee, we were able to add two more pay runs for the indoor season from September to April. So as you can see there, there is now another pay run in the fall. So before that was just one before Christmas and now there's two. And then we also added one right after the new year. So that covers up to January 15. With that, the each pay run is about six to eight weeks long and it will allow everyone to be paid more frequently and faster. With that said, if you haven't signed up for direct deposit yet, less know, and then we can set you up with that.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kelvin. And I also just want to point out, I want to thank Lynn Watkins and Brian Rancourt. They were the lead on that initiative. So thank you. So up next, the Safe Sport and not sure if that's Joanne or Carrie.
That's me. Yeah. So the Safe Sport Training Module is a new e-learning module that all adults have to do. This includes coaches and administrators and now referees as well. It is an important module because it helps adults involved in amateur sport identify and prevent maltreatment and abuse of our athletes. It's free, it's online and can be done from your home. It takes about an hour to do. And the feedback for the course that we've had so far is that it's a really good and informative e-learning module. So in order to access the module, you will need an NCCP locker account. If you don't, if you're not a coach and you don't have any coaching certifications previously, then you'll need to create an account to access that module. And all that can be done at savesport.coach.ca. And if you have any questions, feel free to contact me and I can walk you through it.
Wonderful. Thanks, Kelvin. Okay. So hopefully you've all seen this. It would have been nice to have it in your possession. They were to be handed out at nationals and then the bulk of it would have been sent to the OVA to distribute to our, to our referees. So that didn't, didn't take place, but earlier in the summer, the newsletter went out. So here is the, the new badge that will replace the, the old one that's in, in line with the, the new logo. So you'll see that there's also, there's all, all five levels there and very, very excited to hopefully get that soon. And I say hopefully, it is slated for, for January. And so that's the, what we've been, been told. VC has just in the last couple of weeks opened up their doors to their staff as they were working from home. And, and so that's the latest I've heard from Ryan Bunyan, who is the referee manager that's working on our behalf. So there will not be a charge. So this is a, a free to all of the referees. If you want a second one, then yes, you would need to, to, to purchase a second one. No different now than, you know, you, you have your, your badge and you end up losing it. That cost would fall on, on you. But everyone who is a registered referee will be receiving that in the next couple of months. So. Next.
Andrew, sorry, a quick question. The registered referee from last year's database?
From, from last year's database. That's right.
Okay. Just to avoid a whole bunch of questions.
Thank you. Okay. So what's, what's new? Well, you know, we got shut down in the middle part of, of March. So again, I had mentioned that is it's now seven months. We wanted to continue the conversation. It was important to stay engaged. It was important to stay informed and ready for the eventuality of when we'd be starting up. And so we started with the indoor, let's talk, which is the last Sunday of each month. And that started right in March. That was the, the first session took place the end of March. And then shortly thereafter, next month, month and a half, we came with the, the beach. So we've actually gone through seven indoor, let's talk and, and five on the beach. We have Guy Bradbury, who is a retired international referee and also a member of the FIVB Commission along with Andy Cameron, international referee. And then newly we have Jason Dodd and Samara Savour. So the five of us have these conversations where we go through different situations, different videos and, and we discuss it. It's, it's really informative. We've been getting some, some good feedback. You know, some, some great topics. A lot of the videos right now are from the FIVB and we, we recognize that we are putting in, we have some videos from OUA and we also have some from OVA that we will be highlighting as well. But we have a great session coming up at the end of this month and it's about sanctioning and warnings and then how to give cards. And so we know that's going to be a, a really, a really good one. So, and, and with that, we've also have the, the Rules R and you'll see the Rules R V2. So it's sort of the second version. The first one is really probably, you know, stale and outdated. This second one is, is new and improved. And just so you're going to see a lot more functionality from it. It's not going to be your standard true and false. We're going to have some video and, and diagrams. So it's going to be entertaining and educational as we continue. And we think it's important, you know, we are investing in our, our referees. And so that will be launched in the next month or so. The committee, I tell you, has been working extremely hard this The committee, I tell you, has been working extremely hard this past spring and summer. Just to give you an idea, typically, we have our end of the season meeting, which is in May after Nationals. And then we start up again in September as a kickoff. And that runs about a day, a day and a half as we launch into this season. Well, with all of this time on our hands, we said, "Well, why not, let's get some things done." And so we've been meeting monthly. And in fact, in March or April, we met twice. So we've already had eight sessions. And we're passing, you know, policies through where, you know, that's why we started the online. I mean, that was one of our initiatives, we got the pay run through. I'm happy to report to you on, what is this, October the 5th, that for the OUA, we removed the 50-kilometer bubble. That's something that's been in place for a number of years. And we've heard, you know, especially from some of the schools that are far away that you are having to drive to. So this is in particular, I would say, to Regions 3 and in Regions 5. But, you know, so we got rid of that bubble. So you will get mileage on kilometer one. The OCAA contract is coming up, and I'll be looking to remove that as well. So that's something that I know we've gotten a lot of feedback from. And so I'm happy to report that. With this shortened season, you know, we've had a couple newcomers. And, you know, we just weren't able to get everything done. I mean, we've done a lot, but we're still more. And we felt that a two-year term wasn't enough. And so we were able to vote and get it through. So now we're going to have a three-year term for our RRCs. And, but like any other organization, especially the OVA Board with VC, there is a limit. And so we don't want to just have someone in place for the entire time. So we're looking at limiting it to three-year terms, three years. So nine years going through, and then we can rotate and get some fresh blood in there as well. I think it's important. So that's something else that we had passed. Finally, another thing I want to talk about, we know, this is a trying time. We know that people are worried. We know that some of our new referees may not stay with us. And some of our tenured referees may not stay with us. You know, as you go through something like this, you end up finding other things to do. And we don't want to be caught flat-footed. We know we're not going to get the same numbers if and when we start up. And so with that, we've put together another sort of task force to identify and help with this. And that is our recruitment and retention. And so we're having these subgroups to help with this. And with that, it's led by Samara Savour, Jennifer Adams, Arena Zamboni, Jason Dodd, Brian Rancourt, Alicia, and Calvin. And so we know we need to get out there and recruit. It was tough at the best of times, and so imagine now. And so with this group, we know we're going to hit the ground running and we're going to be successful. So I thank them for their efforts. All right, so next up, I guess I should, you know what, I can entertain some questions. We're near the end. You know what, no, let's go through this and then we'll wrap up. So let's move on to the Red Cross Grants and then we will ask questions, so.
And Andrew, actually, we're really good on the questions. We've been answering them as we've been going along. So I think we've actually answered everything so far. And if not, sorry if I've missed a question for someone, just maybe repost it again because there's a lot of chat going on, so I'm hoping I'm catching all of them.
I mentioned at the beginning, this was a superstar group, and so I'm not surprised, so thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so Red Cross Grant. You know, if you're up on the OVA website ever or getting and reading the bulletin that goes out every two weeks, you've seen a lot of information coming out about these Red Cross Grants. So as an association, we applied for three grants, you know, over July and August. And we were lucky enough to receive all three of them, which has been amazing. So the first grant that we received was for PPE for frontline workers as well as online training. That's usually a $20 cost for someone to take that they're offering it for free. So Calvin sent out all of that information for the online training and the instructions to the referees. So I'm hoping everyone's hopping on and receiving their free online training. And I believe that has to go back to Calvin. Once it's complete, let him know that it's done. The second grant that we got, sorry, I didn't have this one on here, was a Team Ontario grant that we got, but it was great, happened over the summer. And it helped the association modify an in-person training session to an online training session. So it gave us a lot of good information for the third grant that we applied for. So the newest grant that we're working on and has to be delivered by November 30th is basically online training for coaches, clubs, and referees on how to adapt our sport to make it safe for everyone involved. So we're using online platforms. Basically, the Referee Engagement Center that was designed for the Ontario Trillium Foundation Grant in partnership with Volleyball Canada is what is being utilized for the referee side of things. So currently, we have about 250 reps on that system. Information will be coming out to all of our reps of how everyone gets on there to access all the information. So we're just tweaking the current system, adding more information, having a Safe Sport, Return to Sport entire section. And what we're going to have there is everything from, you know, community forum discussions, we're going to have training resources, we're going to do a bunch of videos that are getting posted to go over all of the rule modifications, match management protocols. We're working on doing some online mentorship. And kind of what Andrew already spoke about is with this year, if we don't have a traditional season, which is looking more and more negative as the days go on, we want to make sure we're still engaging everyone. And this is going to be a great training resource to have like the one-stop shop that everything that we need is going to be there. We're also going to be offering webinars, once again, with the Safe Sport. Dr. Carrie McDonald from VC, the Director of Sports Science, we're just firming up the last week of October with him, all that information will be sent out. We're also hoping to get Dr. Scott McLean, the new National Officials Chair, in to talk about psychology of refereeing and also, you know, discussing the anxieties of getting back to refereeing, you know, in a gymnasium when we're in the middle of a pandemic and how do we get over that? And some of us might not be able to, and some may, and, you know, kind of strategies, how to mitigate the risk and getting comfortable enough to get back into the gym. Another thing we're looking at is conflict management. So as a referee who's managing the match, how do we deal with difficult spectators or coaches or athletes, you know, even if it pertains to the return to play power calls? And if coaches aren't wearing their face masks and need to, how do you step in as a referee to be like, "Hey, you're breaking the rules", and be comfortable with that role? Same with like athletes, if they're not physical distancing, making sure that we're addressing that as well, and just kind of working on conflict management. So it's exciting, it's a big project, there's a lot to deliver by November 30th. So we are just working on the rollout plan with dates and information. Calvin will be reaching out to all of the referees in the next few weeks to get you guys into the system and to see all of the many new resources and training opportunities that we have for you guys. So it's pretty exciting. That's my quick update, and I see a lot of questions coming in.
Want me to move ahead here, or you want to tackle that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if there's any Red Cross ones in there actually, so that's fine. Okay, I'm good, that's my update. You're on, Andrew.
Wonderful, great, thanks Alicia. Okay, so sort of in line with that, so what Alicia's referring to is what's happening for us here, specific in Ontario. You should have seen an email that had gone out from Volleyball Canada or through Volleyball Canada to Calvin, and Calvin sent it out to all of us. And that is the VC webinar series. The first one took place a couple of weeks ago, and that was Waiting for the Sports World to Open. And that was Dr. Natasha. And so that was, that was well-received. Could have been a little higher in numbers, it was only, I guess, 75 at the high end, and that was throughout Canada. There are three more that are upcoming. And I believe I just received an email from Ryan today, so I'll get that flipped over to Calvin and Alicia. But the next ones, we have on October the 18th is Canadian Woman in Sport, and that's Conflict Resolution. And then we have, again, Dr. Scott McLean, as Alicia pointed out, the new National Officials Chair, and that's the Psychology of Refereeing. What we are doing is we're having something tailored for Ontario. So look out for that, because again, these are, you know, across Canada. And then finally, Dr. Carrie McDonald, Safe Return to Sport, and that's on Sunday, December the 6th. And so what we are looking to do for Ontario is more intimate and just for us. So look out for these emails for these sessions. They're free, and I highly encourage you to attend. You're talking about an hour, an hour and 15 minutes. And again, it's staying engaged, you know, being together. And there's no better opportunity, if we're not able to do it in person, than to do it on Zoom. Next for me, please. All right, so you'll see there, VNL is back. It was back this past year, but it was canceled. But they are getting ready and hopefully crossing their fingers that it will take place. And so the women are scheduled for May 25th to the 27th, and it's in Ottawa. And, you know, a big shout-out to Arena. I mean, she was involved in, I guess, the last two or so, and was instrumental with her staff for this one as well. It's Tuesday to Thursday, it's a little bit different than the men, as you'll see, right? And that's, they want to really capitalize on the volleyball. So before, you had the men and women all going at the same time. So now you get six days of volleyball. The men will be, I think they are in Alberta. And I'm not sure of the date at this point. Andy or Sam or Jason can find that for me. So, but on Ottawa, look out for that. And next, please.
I think it's in June in Calgary.
June in Calgary, thank you. All right, well, that is the update for this session. I want to say that look out for December, we're going to have another one. It's important because we don't have all the answers, and we should be in a better position by then. So again, we're going to look at around the first week of December. By then, we'll know about, you know, OUA and OCAA. We'll have a better understanding of the OVA. We are limited to a great extent on, you know, the province and what's happening. Are we keeping these numbers down? Because as you see, I don't know what it was today, but we've been hitting 500, 600, 700. And we're really not even into the flu season yet. And what does that flu look like as opposed to COVID? That's the challenge, and that's the issues. You see in other sports, people are getting hit again, right? You look at the NFL, having to postpone. We don't want to be in that same situation. So we want to get together again. We'll have more information to provide and give you that update on all some of those burning questions. So I will turn it over, and if you have any questions for the staff or your RRC, for myself, I will open it up at this point. And actually, one other thing that I forgot to mention, and Bob's probably going to kill me. Here, as I go through the list and I talk about everybody on the committee, and I left out Bob Rock as the Equality Assurance Chair. So sorry about that, Bob. Not only is he Equality Assurance Chair, but he is instrumental with the mentoring and organizing that whole platform and, you know, even with Volleyball Canada. So thank you for that, Bob.
You're getting old, Andrew, you did mention it.
I did mention, okay, so I wasn't sure. I'm expanding on your portfolio.
Oh, thanks.
I'm sure some may jump in with some questions. I just wanted to give a quick update too. We have shared our Return to Play Protocol with OUA. And I've had meetings with them. And hopefully, they're actually going to know in the next couple of weeks what they're going to do. They, they, yeah, this is where it's like, they don't know. But I did provide them with some different scenarios that worked with government regulations because they're dealing with so many sports that they were, they were, the director of sport, Matthew Davies, was happy to get some direct information about volleyball and just also what the PSO was doing. So I don't know that the university presidents are going to jump all over it, but at least the OUA has the information. And there's been lots of discussions. And the date that I've heard is actually as early as October 15th that there might be some more information coming from the OUA. So stay tuned.
Perfect, thanks, Joanne.
Okay, a couple of questions that have popped up here in the chat. Andrew, I wasn't clear on the update program, is a Level 2 available to be upgraded? I'm assuming to Level 3 if you haven't started the program as of yet.
No, so unless you are already in the program, we will not be proceeding with any new programs. So this would only be for the, those that are in the existing program. We just don't have the ability to get all of those requirements through with the different tournaments, especially if there is an influx of people that are interested. And typically, that is the case at the Level 2. And also, because we're going to be limited with the amount of teams. And so that wouldn't be fair if we had to say, "Sorry, we're only going to cap it at, you know, four people", for instance. So we just made that decision not to move forward with the Level 2.
Just to throw more work to you and the committee, Andrew and Calvin and everyone. So you have this amazing online Level 1 course, when is the online Level 2 theory coming?
Yeah, and I should have, you know, mentioned that too. That is something that we will be looking at doing. So I think we'll want to wait and see what that reaction is. I mean, the reaction is already very positive, but for sure, we can develop that. And also, you know, shout-out to the beach. So we'll be looking to put that on for the beach as well. So for sure, it's going to have that capability.
Okay, and just more clarity on the warm-up protocol, Carrie, in terms of hitting protocol for the hitting team and non-hitting team. So do you want to answer that one?
Was there a specific clarification needed, or?
Carrie, could you mind if I jump in on this?
Go for it. Yeah, sure.
Okay, so we had, again, so we had the opportunity to video this. And so what's going to happen is, you're not going to have more than six people on one side of the net. So whoever, okay, let's take Team A, for instance, and they have 12 players. Six players will be warming up, the other six will be on the other side of the net, shagging those balls. So prior to this, we had the other team that was assisting with that. That team will be on their bench, they will not be involved whatsoever. So after a minute and a half or so, they will switch up, and then the next six will hit. For the serving, you'll have that same six that will stay on the one side, and then the other six will go to the other side. What we experimented with, and what you will see as well, is the opportunity or the possibility opportunity or the possibility of the international style of warm-up. And what that is, is both teams hitting, the same team hitting, but the same one six on the other side and the other six, and they just divide the court. That's a little bit more tricky, and I would assume it would only be maybe at the 17 or 18 that will try that, because in essence, you're going to be hitting down the line, and you're going to have to control the ball as opposed to being able to hit cross-court. So I don't know if there'll be many teams that will want to do that, but that is an option, and that is something that we ran as well. So no more than six on one side, and the other team will be off watching. So hopefully, that clarifies that.
And once again, all of these videos that, you know, Andrew is speaking about the protocols that they went through on the weekend are going to be cut into like short little snippets. So we'll have like max 30-second little videos that are going to be posted to the Referee Engagement Center. So you guys can make sure, like you can see the written, but you can also see the visual through the videos that we'll be posting as well over the next six weeks. All right. Another question. Will we be continuing, if possible, with the indoor mentor program that has been in development over the past couple of years?
For me, I would hope so. I don't see any reason why that would stop. In fact, it would be a little bit more intimate, I would say, because you're not, you know, covering three courts or four courts. So we want to continue with the development, and we find it's important. And that's why we are moving ahead right now for the next year anyway with the, what the rules are. Development is important. It's a huge investment, and we don't want that to stop. So I think I can, you know, safely speak for Bob and the OVA that, yes, we will continue.
Okay, great. Also, assigning for OVA tournaments, should it be kept to a bare minimum, i.e. one official per court assigned all day without having an extra official relieving for breaks, or keep scheduling as in the past with sanitizing when changing? So I can answer this one. So Volleyball Canada has protocols and regulations that they put together in terms of recommendations. Currently, OVA staff, the youth competitions crew with Carrie, also Joanne, myself, are reviewing those guidelines and documents and adding more information. And we'll be posting that and sending it out. We'll also be discussing with the referee committee in terms of assigning protocols, because as we had mentioned a few times on this call, we're probably not having a normal season. So we're going to have to have modifications and have shortened days and shortened match times. So once again, stay fluid, stay very adaptable, and we will be answering that question at a later date once we have the final protocols in place based on what our season looks like as well. So stay tuned. All right. Another question regarding hitting protocol or warm-up protocols. What happens if a hitting team aims their cross-court hits at the non-hitting team bench?
Then they need to go back to the basics. No, I mean, that, that happens.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we're going to just have to, you know, monitor and, and make sure, I'm not, did I go in the dark, by the way?
Yeah, you totally did.
Sorry. I'm actually at work when the lights went off. So, yeah, so they're just going to need to, you know, be aware and, you know, we will have to, to deal with it. So they just, you know, no different than what happens, you know, today. I mean, the team does not have to shag the balls, and they're off on their, their side of the court. And so we'll just have to take care of it.
All right. Sounds good. Joe, I'll send this one to you. What if a team has 13 players? What happens with the warm-up if there can't be more than six players, active players per side of court?
We'll work that into the warm-up protocol. We'll talk to LP about that. So I mean, a lot of times, the, the liberals just doing the passing. So we'll, so we'll work that in with, when we share that information. But that's a great question. So
Okay.
Just to go way back, Alicia, there was one about accessing the Red Cross grant, just so you know.
Okay, was it just going to be URL?
Training was still, yeah, if the training was still available?
Yes, it's still available. I can, I will put the link in as soon as I get a chance to. I promise. Another question. So Andrew, are the e-whistles loud enough?
I can, I can answer that if you want. So yeah, I have one. There's three different tones. It's 120 decibels, and everybody will hear it. Yeah, no problem whatsoever.
Yeah, no, no issues. There's actually three different decibels, so not, not an issue.
Okay, I think.
Sorry, Alicia, just, just with, if anybody wants to hear the, the electronic whistle on YouTube, the NCAA Women's Play is playing, and you can pull up YouTube videos on current matches. So you'll be able to hear the whistle and how it works. It's really easy.
See, sorry, Andy. And also along those lines. So what we found is the best way to utilize that, that whistle is you take your lanyard and you clip it to the whistle. Don't keep it in your hand. I know there's some VC protocol about that, but we're able to adopt it. We have found this is the best way. And so what you do is you just, you know, if you have it in your right hand, for instance, and the team is serving on your left, you whistle it, then you do your, your signal. You keep it in your hand. When you stop play, you whistle, you drop it, and then you make your, your signal. You don't have to try and, you know, blow with, with the electronic and then use it with your hand and move to the, you know, left or the right. Once you stop play, you can relax that lanyard, relax the whistle, and then go through your, your sequence. So it's, you know, half a second delay or what have you, but it really worked out. And you'd be surprised at how quickly you get used to it. And so now, if you want to keep them in your, in your, your hand when you're doing the, on a serve from your right, it's a little bit more challenging. But so for me, it's just whatever team, whatever side is serving, that is the, it's the opposite side that I have that whistle in. As an R2, I just keep it in that, in my, in that hand. There's no, there's no difference. And then same thing, if you have to make a net call, you activate it, drop it, and then it indicates net fault or centerline.
So for us really old referees or had that refereeing for a while, if you remember, we used to use elastics to determine which team was, was serving. So treat the whistle like it's an elastic from, you know, 30 years ago.
You're aging yourself.
Yeah, you're, you're not that far behind me.
Never mind.
All right. And everyone, I also just added in the information to go to the Red Cross, the online free training. So it's learn.recross.ca. And then you're going to register for the online directed Preventing Disease Transmission course. So there's the code there that you have to enter. We only had 650 slots to do this. So first come, first serve. We already have a bunch of people that have done the course. So try and get in there and beat everyone else to it so you can get to get your online training for free.
Andrew, there was another question about what is the context of why we can only bring a clear plastic bag to the stand, to the gym?
I think they're just wanting to minimize all of the unnecessary equipment that you need to, to take. And so, you know, you have that, the plastic, the Ziploc, you know, and you, and big enough that you can put in your, your ref bag. You don't need to bring your bag that has your, really, you know, your, your shoes or your uniform, because you're supposed to come there already dressed. And so with that, you know, in that little bag, you know, you have your small hand sanitizer. There's going to be one on the table as well. But trying to just eliminate unnecessary equipment and other points of contact when you come into the, to the gym.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we've captured everything. I think, I think, I think. Any other questions? Oh, in the winter, can we change boots to shoes indoors?
I, I would say that, yeah, you could bring and just keep it off on the side. You know, that, that's fine. I mean, I wouldn't expect to bring your actual shoes in there, you know, slushing along. So yeah, that, that's fine. Just I would not bring it into the, into the gym.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. And just a friendly reminder, this video will be posted to the OVA website tomorrow. We are also taking all of these amazing questions because you guys have put so many in. So thank you. You're also making us think about more of the protocols that we need to address for everyone to make it safer for our return to sport. So this FAQ will also be created based on these submitted questions. Give us a few days because there are a lot of questions, but it'll also be on the, on the Town Hall section of the Return to Play. Oh, wow, we have more coming in. I lied, Andrew. I spoke too soon.
Do you want to hang out longer?
I know.
Well, we did say till 9:30, so I'm good.
And we haven't seen each other for seven months. So, you know, it's, we're making up for lost time.
I know, I love it.
Volleyball, it's hard. So I thought it was about wearing gloves on the stand. Did I see that one?
Yep.
Let me jump on that one. Gloves is your choice. The issue with gloves is that as soon as you, it's the same as your hands. As soon as you touch your mask or anything else, it's contaminated again. So you have to be very careful to keep the gloves away from your face and not touch your mask. So it's just more important to continue to wash your hands. But you're more than welcome to wear gloves. It's, it's, it's up to you. And if that's not the question, please type again and share further.
I, I have one as well. So if there is, and I can't, I'm not sure if this was asked or not, but if there's a medical reason and you cannot wear a mask, it doesn't mean that you're not allowed to referee. So we certainly will not say it's a mask or else. If you, and we're not going to ask for a doctor's note, it's going to be on the honor system. But if you feel, you know, there's a reason that you cannot, then that is fine. I would just suggest that you advise the, you know, the coaches that that's the reason why as opposed to you had forgotten and you don't have it. So I think that's important to note as well.
Okay, so kind of in that stream of questioning, then, can a face shield be worn instead of a mask?
Well, the government regulation keeps changing quickly. I think they allow shields. Andrew, do you know?
I, I would be okay with that.
I think it's, I think they, I think they are allowed for the government regulations as long as there's a covering. So again, it would be just if the government regulations change or if the facility has a specific requirement. But yeah, it seems as though, yeah, yeah, if they, if anyone knows, awesome, they've already put it in there, then yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Perfect. Okay.
Other people also have recommendations not to wear the face shield. You can see better with a mask. So I know I always fog up my glasses, but you know, there's, you'll figure out what's most comfortable for you is the most important.
Okay.
Kind of a personal preference, that mask thing.
Yeah, exactly.
So, but thanks for asking that.
Yeah. Did I miss anything? No, I think we're good. All right.
All right. Well, once again, I just want to, on behalf of the referee committee, the awesome team, thank you to Calvin, Joanne, you know, Alicia and Carrie from, from the OVA. Hopefully, you found this to be worthwhile. This is the first time we've had everybody from across the province, and the turnout was, was really good. I think we hit 160 or so. So thank you very much. Continue to be safe, be well, and look forward to connecting in the coming months. Thank you.